I'd like to call again to the Bay County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 at 4:00 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Terancheck.
Here.
Fluger.
Yes.
Bigick.
Here.
Coonan.
Here.
Ryder.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Herrick.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. Please stand for the invocation, followed by the pledge.
Almighty God, Judge of all people, you have placed in our hands, Lord, the wealth we call our own. Give us wisdom by your Holy Spirit, Lord, so that our prosperity may not be a curse in our lives, but an instrument for blessing. We ask that you will guide and give leadership to every member of this Board of Commissioners, and we ask that you will give them knowledge and understanding so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda today will be the minutes of 10:09:18.
So move.
Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, it would be citizen input. Anyone in the audience would like to come forward and speak to the commission and the public agenda. Please step forward to the podium. Please state your name.
John Bantolo. I'm on the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission right now. I replaced Bruce Douglas on the commission. I read the resolution. I'm totally in favor of it. It gives a better oversight of the funds to the county taxpayers who were ultimately responsible for. It would be opportunities for more grant money. And I know Keith Markstrom, they just resigned, he was pushing for a director of Veterans Affairs, puts this more in line with other counties. And it'll be a better policy setup, everything. It's just a good overall decision on your part to put a director of Veterans Affairs in.
Thank you. You said you're on the...
I'm on the Soldiers and Sailors right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Bruce Douglas. I was previous, ran the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Fund, and I also started a van program for Bay County. I've been given to the veterans in this community for 50 years. I've just opened up a house for homeless veterans. My wife bought the house. I financed it. We're not asking any money from anybody. But what's being bypassed is the homeless veterans of this community. You've got to get people on this board that actually know these veterans, know where they live. They're sleeping on park benches or living in their vans or cars. We've got to get these off the street. We've got to get people on these boards that know what's going on. We're not asking for any financial help. I'm paying for that house, and I'll put all those veterans in there. I would like to be on that board, and I'd like to know who's on that board. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ark Schupack. I'm the Bay County Veterans Council Commander, and I just wanted to say that we never even knew about this resolution until today. I didn't hear about it till I was ready to come over here. And I think that's a slap in the face to us. I'd like to review it, and I'd like to be on that board with you. Because the Bay County Vets Council has done more for county veterans than anybody. And I think the previous director that helped us out instead of stabbed us in the back. Thank you.
My name's Fred Zippler. I'm the treasurer of the Veterans Council from the AMVETS as well. And I help Bruce out with his new homeless veteran project. And I'm reading this thing here. There's some good stuff in here. I'm not going to say there isn't. There's a lot of good things in here. I wish I could have addressed this stuff after you people did your vote, but I can't. Just reading down here, you had $295,000 into the Vets, I'm sorry, into the Soldiers and Sailors. Where's that money going? Somebody tells me, and this is all hearsay, I read, $80,000 went to this foundation to buy this house. Or, I'm sorry, this business over here. Now I hear $100,000. Now I hear $125,000. Is that true? Is it just hearsay? Is it just talk on the streets? Still don't know.
Yeah, maybe Amber can give that explanation. The foundation approached Soldiers and Sailors Relief Fund consisting of three gentlemen, John, who already spoke, Keith Markstrom, and...
Mike Burke.
Yeah, Mike Burke, excuse me. And they approved two grants, one for $50,000, one for $75,000. To be so everybody is aware, the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission members are appointed by the probate judge, currently Jan Minor. Now, this is a result of the statute that was passed in 1899, so it goes back a long way. So shoot this, and this is not on any fast track. We want all the input. I think the commissioners do, and I know I do, talking about establishing a Department of Veterans Affairs that would nullify the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Fund and put in the hands probably a board consisting of four, I mean, excuse me, seven members, appointed by the Board of Commissioners there.
This board right here.
This Board of Commissioners would appoint those seven individuals. That would give additional oversight over the three that currently can dispense. The Soldiers and Sailors Relief Fund is generated by our millage, countering like millage for veterans, Soldiers and Sailors Relief Fund. But I don't know if Amber wants to add anything to that, but I just thought I'd explain that. I know Bruce is aware of that, because he's on Soldiers and Sailors Relief. And I know, you know, we've been trying to hit the word out a little bit, or I have, as they get around the veterans post, people weigh in, but they don't have all the details.
Well, I only know what I, either read in the paper or what I hear on the street. Now, I hear that this building, somewhere on Madison, is it? The building was condemned by the EPA or some doggone thing. True or not? I don't know.
That's the Veterans Foundation, not...
But the money came from...
They gave the two grants from the Soldiers and Sailors, the three appointed to that board.
So where'd that money go then?
The Foundation.
The money went to the Foundation. Does the money come back to the Soldiers and Sailors now?
The money that was granted by the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission was voted on in a public meeting by those board members. It was given to the Bay Veterans Foundation. But it's not money that comes back. It's money that's used for that particular building to provide services to indigent veterans should they require them when that building's up in running. The county board proper doesn't have control over where the money in the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission fund is spent. That's decided by the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission, and they do have to look into where they go down.
So, if I understand this all right, I had Cataract surgery recently, and I can see everything back here, but I can't see right here. So, excuse me. So what you're saying is, the Bay Veterans Foundation can write their own check?
No, the Bay Veterans Foundation approached the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission and requested funds.
But the same, yeah, the same guy that's on the Foundation is also on the Soldier and Sailor.
What is one member?
But he'll be on the Veterans Affairs or whatever it's called.
Hasn't been determined who's going to be on that board, this Board of Commissioners. Can we make a determination as to how many people will be on that board and who those people will be? But people will have to submit applications to the board to show that they're qualified, and a certain number of people will be on the one pursuant to statute.
Okay. If I may, I don't want to take up too much time, but I can't say, but, all right, I passed it up. Of course I did. The Soldiers and Sailors was, came about years and years ago, and it says, "Offers assistance to honorably discharged, comma, indigent veterans, comma, and their families in various services." In other words, any honorably discharged veteran can come to the, well, whenever it's going to be now, for assistance if in need. Is that correct?
Yes.
He doesn't have to be indigent. He doesn't have to be homeless. He doesn't have to be living under a bridge. Is that correct?
In order to qualify for assistance under this particular statute utilizing millage funds, they have to qualify as an indigent veteran.
That's not what it says.
But indigency is defined by the commission.
It's not what it says here.
The statute requires that the millage funds, which are being levied for emergency relief, for honorably discharged veterans who are indigent or their family members.
Okay, that's not what it says here.
But that's what the statute requires. We would have, the county has to follow the confines of the statute.
What defines indigent?
The commission defines indigent. It's not defined in the statute.
These people here.
The committee that would be appointed. Right now, it's the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission.
So we have currently, in the hope after this meeting, we still will have the van program that Bruce spoke of briefly. We take veterans to and from, doctor appointments, hospital appointments, what have you. Are you saying you have to be indigent not to use that program?
You've always had to be indigent to use that program, following whatever definition the Soldiers and Sailors...
Well, according to that, no. This was the old statute that you have, and this thing, which I didn't print this out, somebody here printed it out. It doesn't say indigent. It says, "Honorably discharged, comma, indigent, and their families."
Honorably discharged, indigent.
No, it says, there's a comma there.
Honorably discharged, indigent veterans. It's, in order to state, in order to follow your line of reasoning, if the comma means that indigent doesn't apply to honorably discharged, we would also be providing services to indigent, dishonorably discharged veterans.
No, no. What I'm saying...
What this is, is honorably discharged, indigent veterans.
Honorably, excuse me, honorably discharged. It doesn't say "and" indigent.
A comma.
The comma means you got...
And, for "and".
Our flag is red, comma, white, comma, blue. Three things. Same as here.
All I can tell you is how the statute's written. This language was taken from the statute, and the statute requires you be an honorably discharged, indigent veteran, and will provide services that are left you, paid for by the law.
Well, okay, but I strongly disagree, only because it's written here in English. And I don't mean it to be a pain in the neck, by the way, if I am. My next thing. Oh, I think you answered it. This Board of Appointees will be selected by this group right here. And when will that be?
I think probably after the first of the year, assuming my board does. I don't think it's on a fast track.
Okay.
Want to get as much input from veterans as we can.
So our Soldiers and Sailors Board will still be in effect until that point in time?
Yes.
Now, briefly on the van program, do we continue with that van program? Craig?
Yep.
Is Frank going to hang around for a little bit? Or you can't say?
I can't say. I can't speak on Frank's behalf. I mean, him and I have had conversations, but...
I know you have. All right. Okay, I guess that's all I have. Do I know what you guys do? Thank you. Sorry I took up so much time.
My name is John DeJohn. I just came up to just make a couple of comments of concern. I was a past chairman of the Bay Counties and Soldiers Relief a number of years ago. And the only thing I'm thinking is I've been talking to some of the other veterans, and they think you're kind of maybe jumping the gun just a little bit because they'd like to have more input. So I don't know how far you are along to make this decision right away. I guess it's pretty much already made. But I thought it would be nice to include some of the other veterans organizations, be able to talk about this before you slam the gavel down. You know, when I was on the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission, which was a three-van group, and this, I had heard it was a five, now Jim Barsch has mentioned seven. That's, you don't want to get it too big because then it gets out of hand. But you might want to consider some of the other groups. You've got the American Legion and BFW and so forth that may have, want to have some little input into this besides something I just heard about the other day, and don't know any of the, you know, the dot in the i's and crossing the t's. So that's basically what I wanted to mention. I mean, it's in your hands, but you should consider that, I think, to be a little more, some of the other people have a little bit more comment. That's about all that I have to say.
You know, I just want to tell you that, don't read too much into this. This is what we're working on today, is to hold a public hearing in December on this whole issue. So it's not, nothing is, we're just making the motion to hold a public hearing in December where other voices can be heard.
Okay, because I didn't know that. We just heard about it.
Yeah.
Bruce Douglas told me, and he said, "Why don't you come to the meeting?" And so I've been observing, I've been seeing that there's a lot of little disagreements. It should be worked out. So I mean, it's not become something that's...
That's why they do that, so, you know, so everybody has a chance for their voice to be heard. That's what we do. You know, that's the way it's supposed to be done.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Barsch.
Yeah, as I mentioned, John, you're someone I've had respectful for an awfully long time. Let's go back. And thanks for all your service to veterans in your country. But yeah, there's no attempt here to rush this change. It's difficult without hometown newspaper that covers local events, but it has been on WSGW and other media, I think, a number of times for months. However, it depends on social media and radio. It's hard to get television to cover some of these issues, and also our local M-Live doesn't seem to have an interest too much in local events. So, yeah, I think we definitely, both we should act, we should probably sit down, you know, with the Veterans Council, see what people's thoughts are, see if it can be improved. With a department like other counties have, we'll be eligible for federal and state grants that we wouldn't currently have. The other thing is, with just three members appointed by the probate judge, as I've gotten around the veterans post, not a lot of them were aware of that structure. I'm not sure how that was, John, when you served, but a lot of veterans weren't sure who was on it, that it was a committee of three, and what exactly the role was. And because it does disperse the money, it's very important. If you go to a Department of Veterans Affairs, you may be enhancing the profile and the accountability and the transparency of what the Veterans Department is doing and how it's spending its money.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that, because it was a three-member board, and that was by the regulation of the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission. But sometimes, you know, I was questioned at what I'm, you know, when I was on the board, because it was so limited. So it's good to have a larger group of people in it, as long as you don't get so many that it gets out of hand.
Yeah, and I, we throw up. It could be, as Amber, our Corporation Council, mentioned, between three and seven. I think the, and I haven't talked with the commissioners, I think some people are leaning toward five. But if there's a lot of interest from veterans organizations in having a member on this board, or maybe tense competition, the, one of the members will be a county commissioner.
Okay.
And then the other members would be veterans. They absolutely have to be veterans, honorably discharged. So we would, I'm thinking down the road, it's up to the commission, because they're the legislative body, whether it's five or seven. Seven would give you additional representation. Five, you know, three, I think, is too small, especially if one's a commissioner, and, you know. So either five or seven, whatever the consensus may be. But there might be more visibility on what Soldiers and Sailors Relief is doing. I have gotten a lot of questions about the grants given to, for the purchase of the building for the Veterans Activity Center, which will be under the Bay County Veterans Foundation, which, as we all know, is a private organization.
Well, thank you, Jim. And it's nice to know that you're listening to the citizens talk about that, and I'm hoping that, you know, I know you guys will do the right job.
As a former chair of the Senate Veterans Affairs Committee, I definitely want to listen to all the veterans that we can listen to to get their input. It's very important.
Get a good idea to include the other groups so they can put some comments in there that might be together.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I got one more comment I'd like to make. That van program, most of them people are not indigent. Most of them people could afford it. But they're in wheelchairs, they got, they don't have driver's license because they got diabetes. A lot of them are PTSD patients. You don't want them on the road. And that's why we started that van program. Please don't touch that van program.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gary Chivisky. I'm the color guard commander. I just want to give you commissioners an update. We've had 125 military funerals this year. We're averaging 10 a month. That's not including all the times that we were asked to present the colors. I think at this time, maybe we should get a little recognition for all these people that take the time off from the day. Sometimes they're waiting an hour, hour and a half, and they need the military funerals. So I, right now, we've got 25 members on the honor guard. We've got no problem doing any military funerals. Sometimes we can, if we have a doubles, we can almost have separate contingencies there. So I just want to give you an update that we're busy, and I would like to thank you for your indulgence. And if you've got any questions, please feel free to ask me.
Gary, I just want to say, I've been, I've been in attendance, even at my brother's funeral, and you guys were there, you know, and I know your whole crew, they're getting a little bit older. I know that, you know, and I'm amazed that you guys still do this. And, you know, I told you, I told the guys there when they came to my brother's funeral that I can't thank you enough, because it was, it was just, it was just nice. Nice touch. Thank you so much.
We do a good job. We're all in uniform. There's no shenanigans when we go to military funerals.
I want to thank you and the color guard of Bay County for the tremendous job you do. Not only do you add dignity to a lot of the important ceremonies held in Bay County, whether the weather is good or whether it's terrible, whether it's cold like today, or 80 degrees, 85 degrees, our color guard is always there doing a tremendous job. And I know firsthand from a family member, I think you know my uncle Bob Cuthbert, I think he's done over 300 funerals. But he's, if he isn't 80, he's approaching 80 years of age, so he's got to cut back now. But I know your color guard is very, very, each person in the color guard is very dedicated and adds so much to whether it's a funeral or a veteran ceremony or a holiday. It's just always great to see our uniformed military out in strength at our public events. And I want to thank you, and maybe at some point there's something we, as the county, can do to thank all of our color guard members. Because I do know that the, these funerals are coming even faster than they used to, it seems. We're hitting that baby boomer generation where people are starting to, you know, to get sick and starting to become infirm or pass away. The demands are even greater, and it's harder and harder to find younger people to probably recruit into the color guard to add that dignity and that great contribution that you make to all of our official events. So thank you, Gary, and please pass that on to all of your members, and maybe at some point we can thank you in some appropriate way, because you deserve it.
Another thing I'd like to mention. I've been to Memorial Day services, Veterans Day ceremonies, and I haven't seen very many of you people sitting here right now. If you can't take the time for 10 minutes or 15 minutes max for falling out for Memorial Day services, and that's in your own districts, no matter where you are, shame on you people. Veterans Day, there was nobody there other than Mayor Nussham and Mr. Bobby Dick, and other than that, zero.
I think I've made the last 38 of them, except for Monday.
It's too bad that we can't, you guys can't honor our veterans for the services that we provide for Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Pearl Harbor Day. Pearl Harbor Day, December 7th at the Edson. We want it at the county building at 4:00. Please feel free to attend. And that's all I have to say right now. Thank you for your indulgence.
Excuse me, I just want to let you know. I was your first county veteran service officer downstairs. I volunteered for two years before they made it a part-time paying job. Remember that. And I've worked together with a lot of veterans, and we've gotten a lot of veterans that were indigent living in these homes. We've got them their benefits. We got them health care. We got them money. They can now handle their own. But I just wanted to let you know, it was a pleasure doing it for them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to petitions and communications. Request for appointment to the Bay County Building Authority. Request from John Fluger and Scott Brink will take a vote that wants the motion to receive and the point.
Who to receive?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'd like a...
Motion to receive?
Motion to point.
A point?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll go to reports and resolutions of committees from the Ways and Means Committee. Commissioner Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today I'd like to bring a resolution, 2018-240, which is the 2018 and 2019 grant awards for the courts. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the resolution, 2018-241. It's the agreement for the 2019 road services for the city of Auburn, Bangor, Monterey, Bay County Enforcement, and Williamstown, Fitzland, and Sheriff. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-242, I'd like to make a motion to refer that to a future meeting. We have some negotiations we need to do with a few of the townships before we actually sign this agreement. Make that...
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the resolution, 2018-243. It's Concierge Corrections, Assess, Asset Recovery Contract with the Sheriff. I move that... I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-244, it's the additional funding for the Crime Victim Rights Grant from the prosecutor. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-245, the creation of the Department of Veterans Affairs with the County Executive. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Peggick.
Just want to comment about, we did pass a resolution about a month or two ago that honored the veterans. I did present it to the ceremony, it's not the appearance of this resolution, but I did present it at Edson and also at the county building up here. And it was told out there, right? We did pass a resolution supporting the veterans, and we always support the veterans.
So, and just, like I said, this is, this resolution, this is going to December 11th for public hearing, so that's where, that's where this takes this, so the veterans out there know this, and they can, they can come and talk again then. So we'll move, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-246, MIDC grant agreement from the Office of Criminal Defense. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-247, the fiscal year 2019 grant service agreements for community corrections. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-248, the 2019 Remonumentation Program Grant from the Attorney Office. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-249, the 85-15 split for the health care for the 2019 year from personnel. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-250, it's a business associate agreement with EHIIM Incorporated for personnel. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-251, it's the BCVSM Schedule 8, the renewal term for 2019 for personnel. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-252, it's the Workers Compensation Policy, DPA, for 2019 through 2024 for personnel. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-253, it's the excess insurance for workers' compensation years 2019 through 2021 for personnel. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-254, the Memorandum Understanding with Issue Media Group, Environmental, this is from Environmental Affairs and Community Development. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Peggick.
You had a presentation on this at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast about a month ago, and there is that website that's set up, and you can sign onto it, and it talks about more of the positive things happening in the community. We have a lot of police reports, as it says in here, but we need some more of the positive things, so hopefully the county can put some of those positive things in there also.
I think, I think that's the idea, and, you know, like we all talk about, there's no, no paper anymore, so not to speak of, you know, it's hard, you know, for one or two days a week, but it's something, it's a step in the right direction. Commissioner Durantcheck.
Commissioner Ryder, we're self-mapped with these spokes and everything, and as you say, it's coming out with a, matter of fact, the first issue is out right now on social media, it's called The Root, so if you're not signed up, Route, Root, whatever you want, however you want to pronounce it, but if you're not signed up, get signed up, and it's a, the first, like I say, the first issue's already been run, I think, last week, and it's positive things about Bay County and the Bay City area, so it's a good thing. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-255, she's been kind of clerk of food and drink for reparations and facilities. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-256, it's the addition of Saigon County 911, Isabella County 911, and CMU 911 to the next generation 911 home system intergovernmental agreement. This is version 911, dispatch, I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Just me. Tell us about this a little bit.
Yes, sir. It's, it's a consortium, a regional consortium, which uses the same technology and equipment which we can cost share and have intimate knowledge and maintenance through the region that we can all use.
It's just, it's just about, more about caution, is it, like, in this agreement with one, if one entity would happen to have an power outage, somebody else picks up their, you know, is there anything to do with any of that? You know, would they pick up their calls, or?
Ultimately, yeah, we can, we can change the routing, we can, we're all using the same equipment, the same vendors, the same technology, so we can, we can really push 911 calls from, you know, Isabella to Tuscola, if necessary.
And then, and Bay County is the lead county in this whole, this whole consortium?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. That's, and you guys do a great job there, thank you. Anybody else? Nope? Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-257, it's the Publishing Service Agreement with Literature Bureau, Publications Incorporated, the DOA. I move that resolution.
Support.
I have that trouble once in a while, too. Any discussion? Commissioner Peggick.
I would note that is the department on aging. In the resolution, you have division, whether it's the write-up or it has department. Do you want to, if you want to change that a little bit?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-258, the acceptance of the Frankie donation to the department.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-259, transfer funds for congregant home-delivered meals from the DOA. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. I'd like to, I'd like to have the department head stuff, I just want, I just want, I read the numbers, and I think, I don't know, I don't know what you guys are doing, but it seems like our numbers are up, and I think you're providing more services to the senior population of the county, and I think it's a great thing you're doing.
We're getting the word out.
So how, how much we up over, like, a year over a year?
Seventeen percent up from last year, and that was 181,000 meals we did last year between congregate and home-delivered meals, and this year we are projecting to do anywhere from 217,000 to 225,000 meals.
Commissioner Coonan.
Beth, this transfer is coming from fund balance?
Yes, it is. It is coming from our fund balance, and yes, it is in 2019. We got a good healthy fund balance, I think, over $2 million right now, so.
I think, so, what are, what are we doing a day? You're going to estimate, like, how many meals a day?
For home-delivered meals, we're doing over 800 meals and about 150 to 200 in our congregate, so we're, we're booking it. We actually had to add a new route, so.
Yep. Commissioner Krieger.
You know, it isn't just about the food that we're providing for these individuals, it's the contact that they have with the gentleman delivering them.
Absolutely.
It's priceless to have those interactions between the, the senior citizen and, and the person bringing that food.
Absolutely. That's one of our requirements, is that we actually see and/or hear the individuals when we walk in a house, we say, "Hey, Mrs. or Mr. So-and-so," you know, and they'll say, "Oh, I'm here," or "I'm in the bathroom," or "Hey, how you doing?" And we have like a 30 to a minute conversation, because we are, we are booking routes and for our time limit, but that's one of our requirements. If they're not home, we don't leave the meal.
Correct. Plus, they get an opportunity to see
Yes.
the facility
Yes.
to make sure that those people are safe.
And they do report back to our case managers if there's any issues.
And, you know, I, I talked to a few people in the last couple of months, and I, you know, I try to tell them that you do a whole lot more, we do a lot of meals, but there's a whole lot more that goes on in that department now
Absolutely.
than used to go on, and, you know, that every service in the world is provided by our, by our Department on Aging, and I think you guys are doing a fabulous job down there.
Thank you very much.
And like I said, keep doing the fabulous job, I know you will, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Peggick.
I haven't had a chance to talk to Beth yet, maybe she's heard. My mom last Thursday
Yes, yes.
was found laying on the floor by one of the drivers.
Yes.
She had fallen and broken her hip, to crying out. We don't think she was down too long, my sister deserved this before that.
We, I actually called you, so.
The driver called 911, got the ambulance there, and took her to the hospital, so.
That's, that's one of our requirements, too. If someone's down on the floor, we don't leave them, we call 911, and then the driver calls, the help, the office, and the office will get ahold of family, let them know what's going on.
That's a perfect example of what you do.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Same thing for our house cleaners and our, our personal care aides, they do the same thing, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-260, it's the 12-1, 2018 Empty the Shelter Day Event for Animal Control. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-261, the MDA Grant for Sterilization of Animal Control. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is amendment, or resolution 2018-262, it's amendment number one to the 2018, 2019 CPVC, Department. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-263, it's the DEQ Agreement for Water Quality from the Health Department. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. Joel. I know it's important, the relationship we have with the DEQ.
Yes.
The question that I have is, with all the news and, and exposure to PFAS, or is that something that we will start to look into on Saginaw Bay and the river?
Actually, I have a couple of things to report on that, so.
Good.
As far as actually testing water within the river, I don't believe that's going to happen anytime soon. The main concern is PFAS in conjunction to drinking water resources, so the public, public drinking water supply, but also where there are wells. And in, I believe it was late September, early October, myself and some of the other representatives from the Health Department attended a regional meeting in the Saginaw County Health Department where the DEQ brought people up to speed as their, to their efforts of sampling specific locations and areas. In Bay County, in regards to public water drinking, excuse me, public drinking water sources, there were two tests that were run on the week of October 17th. We have not received those results yet, so.
Do we know how many wells that we have in Bay County that?
Public drinking wells that were considered to be at risk for PFAS, there is zero, I believe.
Okay.
We, unlike a lot of other, of the surrounding counties, the, the heavy clay level that we have here actually protects most of the groundwater, but also that we've got a saltier content to our water, so many people don't actually use it for drinking water. That's why we have the, the municipal sources from Lake Huron. Those were initially tested, I believe, late last year, and those numbers are on the DEQ's website, they are far below the EPA thresholds. There is talk about actually lowering some of those thresholds as well, but we don't have the problem to the extent that some of the counties, say for example, Kalamazoo, or Kent County, or, or some of the other places around the state do have. We are looking for places that may have been exposed to PFAS, either through industry or, you know, from the firefighting foam and things like that. One of them would be areas surrounding maybe the, the airports here, but once again, we're in a position where, you know, most of those folks that live in those areas have direct contact with municipal water supplies.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-264, payables from the general fund. I make that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-265, budget adjustments for the DOA prosecutor, village grounds, animal control. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the resolution 2018-266, the Department of Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for Finance. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is resolution 2018-267, it's the agreement with MVP of American Consulting LLC from the ISB. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the analysis of the general fund equity, and make the motion to repeat.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is the executive director of 2007-11, I make the motion to repeat.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all I have from, what do you mean?
Thank you, Commissioner Lutz. Next from the Personnel and Human Services, Commissioner Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have resolution 2018-268, Green Maintenance Worker Positioned to Full-Time Permanent Status. I would move that resolution forward.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-269, agreeing with Sarah Hendrickson from the Health Department. I move that.
Support. Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-270 Vacancies. Department of Aging, Aging, Health Department and Animal Control. I move that resolution forward.
Support. Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all we have before the day, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryder. From the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Durancheck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution 2018-271. Proclamation for McLaren Bay Region Auxiliary Day. I still move this and will be presented at a later date.
Support. Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-272. Reports of the County Executive. Would you move this forward?
Support. Discussion. Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Durancheck. Reports of county officials and departments from the County Executive.
Well, just one thing. At Animal Control, we hopefully will have achieved no-kill status by January 1st. We have one more, December 1st, clear the shelter event, and we're at 89.12, and 90 will get us to no-kill. So, things are going well on that front. And I just wanted to say one, you know, I missed this year, first time in many, many, many years, the Veterans Day Observance, but it was held on Sunday instead of a traditional Monday. And I searched them live and I made a few phone calls to get details on the time. No one seemed to be aware of it. How did you find out it's Sunday?
I wasn't sure it was Sunday or Monday either. I asked somebody in front. I didn't see it online anywhere either, no.
Because that's important. Yeah, I think as a county, we hold great reverence for our veterans and certainly appreciate them.
And a resolution.
And the resolution which the board adopted and we all signed. But yeah, it's unfortunate. It's always in my memory. It's always on a Monday afternoon of Veterans Day, not on a Sunday. So, that's why I was not present.
All set? Thank you. Next, we've got the Director of Recreation and Facilities for our Facility Assessment. Yay!
So, I have Mr. Steve Field here to give the presentation from Alpha Facilities. And as he's getting set up, I just wanted to give you a refresher. We now have Dude Solutions, which is our Work Order Management System. Alpha Facilities is the company that Dude Solutions uses to provide the facility condition assessment. They also did our asset inventory of nearly 1,000 pieces of equipment and created our automated preventative maintenance schedules and tasks for our equipment. And their work has been loaded into our system. So, the facility condition assessment that Alpha performed was not only essential to the success of the software with everything being loaded, but it's a great budgeting and decision-making tool for us. So, I'm going to pass out this presentation here to you guys, and I'll give him the floor. All right. And again, this is Stephen Field from Alpha Facilities.
Well, thank you, Kristin, and thank you, Commissioners, and everyone for allowing us a little time this evening to speak on the facility condition assessment. We'll be talking about this assessment that was conducted in April of this year. We reviewed about a dozen of your buildings and facilities after coming up from San Antonio to assist you in this and to help you out with the new facility preventative maintenance system that you purchased from Dude Solutions. We're a partner with Dude Solutions, and so we work quite closely with them in exactly this type of thing. I'll start out by telling you just a little bit about Alpha, and then we'll move into looking at some of the facilities themselves. And as we talk about facilities, there is a, there's a bit of repetition in there. And so, we've kind of cherry picked the top three facilities that we thought warranted discussion. These are the ones that might be regarded as the ones with the worst conditions or the greatest needs for renewal investments. And so, anyway, we'll speak more about that here in a few moments. So, Alpha is a 10-year-old company. We're located in San Antonio, Texas. We have about 140 employees and we've got about 17 offices across the country and in Puerto Rico. We've done numerous contracts, just like we've done here at Bay County. And we work closely with city clients, county clients, state and federal agencies. We do a lot of school districts and private developments, healthcare, and hospitality industry clients together. Altogether, we've reviewed about, we've assessed about 200 million square feet of facilities around the world to the tune of about $9 billion in assets. Our employees work under a set of core values shown here on your screens: dedication, integrity, and innovation, commitment, and excellence. We call them our DICE principles. And we are singularly focused on exactly this type of work. That's facility condition assessments. We don't do a lot of other stuff. We focus in primarily on this. Our services are tailor-fit to the needs of your organization. We don't try to sell you proprietary software that you need to keep coming to Alpha for. No, we work with you with the software that you select, and we try to support you in any way we can to make that software work to suit your needs. We're a small business, an 8A firm. We're also a veteran-owned business as well. This is a facility asset management service wheel, if you will. It shows the various stages of lifecycle management. Alpha works in the top two nodes there that you see there. We do assessments and we help our clients with their planning. We don't do any design or construction or O&amp;M services. And so, today, we're going to cover the three facilities that had the highest facility condition indices. And high, the lower the number, the better the facility is, the higher the number, kind of the worse condition the facility is. So, these were the three with the highest facility condition index ratings. That's the community center, the juvenile home, and the law enforcement center. For these three, yes, sir?
Did you do Centered Jarms?
No, sir.
We didn't do Centered Jarms because at the time, we were going into this contract, we were going, working with, yes, at the same time we're working with.
Thank you. So, for the Bay County portfolio, we performed basically four services at each of the 12 buildings. We did a facility condition assessment. We performed pavement assessments at each of these buildings. We developed an asset inventory. It's basically the equipment inventory of all of the equipment assets that you had. And then we developed a preventative maintenance system to go into the Dude Solution software that you purchased. Here's a little more detail about what the first step was, the facility condition assessment. We evaluated about 382,000 square feet of your facilities. We went through, we identified and documented the conditions associated with those facilities. We, through these observations, estimated the remaining service life of 23 major building systems shown here on your screens, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, roofing, and finishes of these. We then developed rough order of magnitude cost estimates for the system renewals and the pavement repairs that might be needed. We forecasted the future facility renewal requirements based on lifecycle analysis for the next 20 years. And then, we also calculated facility condition indices for each building and entered all of that into the software. So, that was the first phase. The second was the site assessment, and that's basically evaluating pedestrian and vehicular payments, providing them ratings similar to what we did with the buildings. We also developed cost estimates and entered those into the capital forecast software. The third step was conducting the asset inventory, as we call it. That's the data on about 1,000 pieces of equipment that you had in those 12 buildings. This is the list of the type of data that we entered, which was the location in the space, the type of equipment, the capacities and sizes, so on and so forth. All of that data was entered into the system. And then finally, we developed a PM schedule, which was assigning the tasks and the start dates and the start months and the frequencies of occurrence for all those 1,000 pieces of equipment. Okay? All of that went into that new work order management software. Okay, this slide really just shows some of the resources and references that we use in our work. These are industry standards, and some of you may already be aware of some or all of these. And this is a list of some of the terminology that we use. When I say a facility condition index or FCI, that's the benchmark that we use for comparing the relative condition of facilities. A quote-unquote need is a capital renewal requirement based on the current forecast deficiencies of that system or equipment. The current replacement value is simply the cost that's assigned for replacing the facility to its existing size and functionality. We use rough order of magnitude cost estimates. These are very general cost estimates that are typically developed at the early stages of a project, and they could be plus or minus 50% of the actual cost. And by the way, I'll mention that these are based on hard costs only. For those of you familiar with that terminology, you know that that's the labor and materials and equipment associated with it. It's not the soft costs, which are design fees and cost of financing and insurance and all of those sorts of things. Yes, sir.
If I could just maybe back up a second. So, you've identified 1,000 different pieces of equipment that are going to have preventative maintenance programs, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do we have enough personnel to pull that off in a year's time?
Not every piece of equipment, you know, they may only need preventative maintenance quarterly. Some may only need it yearly, some monthly. We don't currently have a tracking system, other than our guys just know, you know, what they have to do. So, I think, you know, how many work orders we produce and how many we're getting, is some of the data that we're going to be collecting through this work order management solution. But, you know, right now, we're doing, we're doing it, and we just aren't tracking it in any corner.
So, I'm assuming that all of this effort and work that we've just done is by putting these preventative maintenance programs into action, that we're going to increase the longevity of that piece of equipment?
Absolutely. That's a perfect point that I wanted to make in this presentation, is that you've seen a number already, and we'll see that number again. This is the cost, the recommended cost of the need.
So, I would be anxiously waiting to see just how much money we're going to save by the money we invest in.
Yes. And right now, that, it's an unknown, because we need to know, or the county will need to know just how these systems respond to preventative maintenance. But our evaluations were based on what we call a Level 1 assessment. This is a, it's essentially a visual observation. There's no disassembly of equipment, no testing of equipment. And so, now, we supplemented that with anecdotal information that came from the county staff who escorted us around. And so, when we call a system good, the way that the algorithm works is that it says that you're not going to need to fix that system or replace that system for at least five years. If it's poor condition, you have to fix it today. And that's, or you may have to fix it today. But with additional maintenance, you can push some of those costs off to further on down the road.
Okay, thank you.
So, just a couple of other terms that we use is lifecycle is one, and that's the average period of time that a building system or a particular component is expected to adequately serve in its intended function. And then we talk about high, medium, and low priority systems. The high priority systems are those that if they go out, your facility is out of business. And these are things like electrical systems or heating systems in the winter. If your roof goes up, that's a big problem. Medium priority systems are those that are important, but they're not critical. These would be other systems. The low priorities are like the exterior finishes and that sort of thing. We've got a list here in a moment that we'll go through on what constitutes those. But they, these priorities do form a, they have a function in the algorithms that are used in developing costs for future projection of needs. So, that's why I bring it up here. Because the, most of our work is based on the facility condition index, I wanted to just show you that calculation. It's very simple, as you can see. The facility condition index is, you take the cost of expired systems that need to be replaced or that we project need to be replaced, and you divide that by the cost of the current replacement value of the facility. And in the example shown here, it's $3 million for the expired system repair or replacement divided by $10 million a facility. That gives a 30% FCI. There's kind of a scale shown here on the bottom of what constitutes a good, a fair, a poor, or a critical condition. And as you can see, the higher the number, the higher the FCI, the worse that condition is. Okay, this was the priority that I was talking about a minute ago. The high priorities are those that if your system is out, your facility may be considered not usable. So, we factor those a certain way in the algorithm. These are the medium priorities. Let's see, mostly the enclosure and some HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning components, and then plumbing components. And then low priority systems, which are basically your finishes. And again, since these form a basis of calculation, we worked with the county to make sure that these were in line with the county's objectives, so we could proceed with accurate calculations. Okay, so now, we're going to start looking at some specific numbers for the county portfolio. And so, all of the tables, by the way, that we're, and figures that we're looking at, they can be found in the Facility Condition Assessment Report that we've provided to the county. And what this table does, it provides an overall summary of the findings for the 12 facilities that we assessed. These findings are shown on this table for the current condition in 2018 and the projected five-year condition for 2023. So, I'll draw your attention to the third column from the left, the one labeled Total Needs for 2018. And this shows the capital renewal needs for each facility. Okay?
If I could interrupt a second?
Yes, sir.
So, I don't have bad vision, but to see it on the screen is almost impossible. And surely, this isn't working. So, maybe at the end, we could get something emailed to us, blown up, that we can look at, because this isn't cutting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll hit some of the highlights for what it's worth, and, but yes, we'll.
Yeah, I want to make sure I'm getting my money's worth, so something legible would be really good. Thank you.
All right. So, the, that third column from the left shows those capital needs, and I apologize for the small print here. And a couple of the highlights here is that the most costly current needs are the law enforcement center. That came in at about $2.8 million of current needs. The community center, which was about $1.6 million. center, which was about $1.6 million, and the county building, which is $1.6 million as well. Okay, that's based on cost. And these three facilities, they constitute about 50% of the overall portfolio need requirements. The primary drivers in all of this were aging electrical and plumbing systems that are reaching the end of their projected life cycle, but also some roofing. In the case of the community center, there's life safety, I believe it's fire alarms at the county building, and interior finishes at the law enforcement center. Now, in column five, which is the, the facility condition assess, facility condition index, the three highest facilities are slightly different, but not much. The community center had a FCI of 27. That's fairly high. Juvenile home, 23, and the law enforcement center was 17. And as a reminder, the FCI greater than 10 is kind of considered poor condition. The FCI greater than 30 is critical, according to the International Facility Managers Association.
I have a question also. Go ahead, Tom, your hand.
Yes, sir.
Do your cost estimas, is it based on a maintenance crew that the county has with them, or is it based on specialty contractors coming in to sell new systems?
It would be the latter. They're based on RS means, if you're familiar with the RS means, cost estimating thing. So those do basically assume a contracted labor, material and equipment, that sort of thing. Again, I'll mention here, these are hard costs. And so if you do it internally, then there are some soft costs that you might have to.
You mentioned the community center being a high, high number. We just did a renovation of the kitchen, we just put it.
It's separate. Riverside and the community center were taken separately.
Okay.
Oh, right, and Riverside scored very well. It, yes, we've.
So maybe it's the pool that caused the numbers to be so high at the community center.
And you also have to remember that a lot of this information is coming because a certain system is at the end of their lifecycle. But that doesn't necessarily mean the system is failing. It just means that it's at the end of its typical lifecycle. So, you know, because we've been performing the proper maintenance on it, let's say a roof, for example, you know, and we've patched where we've needed to and we've taken care of it, it doesn't necessarily mean we need to replace right now. It just sort of means that we need to start paying attention to them because it's at the end of our, it's projected lifecycle.
It's based on national averages and exactly just what Kristen said. If we know that that roof is 25 years old, it may still be performing well, but as it goes into the algorithm, the algorithm says, hey, most roofs' life expectancy is about 25 years, and so it will apply a need. And, and so with the proper continued preventative maintenance, you, you may get another five, you may get another 10 years out of that roof. And the same principle applies with all of the other systems that go into the overall assessment.
Thank you.
Now, mostly equipped, most of the information that I'm going to be showing you is, there is some repetition because it's sliced and diced in different ways. And this is because there are different people who have different needs as far as the data. And so anyway, we're going to give you just a few varieties of how we've sliced this material, this data. So again, I apologize for the small print on this, but this is the same data. It's shown in bar chart fashion. This format kind of helps you to quickly pick out the facilities that require the larger investments. And it, you can see two colored bars here. The purple bar is for the 2018 assessment. The greenish bar is for, represents what we project the, the increase would be in by 2013, uh, 2023, excuse me, five years from now, if no further intervention was made. Okay? And the reason for the increase, a lot of the time, is just because there are additional systems. Let's say you've got five HVAC units on the roof and one of them expired now, but three of them are going to be expiring over the next five years. Those extra three will go into the larger bar. And, and so that's kind of how that, that calculation shows. Again, the principle of extending those life cycles based on good maintenance applies. This slide, the last slide showed based on cost, and this slide shows based on FCI. And the FCI's, the, the highest FCI's are the community center, the juvenile home, and the law enforcement, like we've kind of been talking about. Okay. Oh, and this slide just basically shows the cost split between building systems and, and site systems, the pavements. Okay, you can look at that, see that split. Now, this slide shows the current and projected costs for your facility portfolio by major building system. And so this one shows that currently your, your plumbing and electrical systems are going to be the highest dollar items because of the age of many of the facilities here. And then this slide is just based on your current versus forecasted need based on priority. And you've got the high priority systems up top. The red bar is for 2018, the gold bar is for 2023. And then you've got the medium priorities and the low priorities shown in the other Okay, this is, this slide right here is a slide that, it shows the 10-year forecast of how your capital needs will accrue. There's typically a spike in the first year, 2018. We see that in every facility, every portfolio that we assess. And that's because of this accrued batch of systems that are expiring, will be expiring soon. And they show as being expired, but you may be able to, with proper maintenance, push those costs off to the right. The remaining bars are just based on our calculations, based on what we projected the life cycle of, of these systems to be. Okay, and here is just a little more granularity. We're making these slides as small as we can, I guess, because this is hardly legible even for me. But nonetheless, this is all in the, on the report. And this just provides, like I said, a little more granularity of the systems and subsystems. This is for the total county portfolio, but there are also other slides like this for each facility. Okay, now, we'll take a quick look at the community center and some of the costs that went into that. This building was built in 1975. It had the highest facility condition index in the portfolio with a 2018 rating of 27 and a capital needs requirement of about $1,006,000. Here we're looking at the, at the current and forecasted needs based on component. And this slide shows that the primary needs are driven by the plumbing, electrical, and roofing system needs. As we've talked again, it doesn't mean that these systems are in imminent failure. It just means that they've been shown to expire based on the age of the facilities. And, and you can expect a higher probability of failure as time goes on. Okay, this is more of the, the data. This is based on, on the high, medium, and low priority. And this type of slide is good if you, if you have limited resources, you want to know where do I need to allocate my, my funding, going for the high priority systems will get you the biggest bang for the buck. And, you know, the corollary to that is that the low priority systems can perhaps be put off a little bit longer. Okay, this shows the distribution of funding needs over the next 10 years. Again, you've got the spike in 2018. And then there's the more granular projections. The juvenile home, kind of more of the same. This was built in 1957. It has an FCI of 23 and a capital need requirement of about $911,000. Those numbers escalate over the next five years to about $1.2 million. Similar type of slide here for the juvenile home. This shows that the current needs are driven primarily by the electrical system and the exterior enclosure, the walls and finishes and windows. Okay. Here are your high, medium, and low priorities for the juvenile home. And the renewal forecast over time for the juvenile home. And then finally, the law enforcement center. This was built in 1978. It's a 40-year-old building. And it had an RFI, I'm sorry, an FCI of 17 and a capital needs requirement of about Okay, and the same set of slides is presented here for the law enforcement center. You'll be able to see these and digest them a little bit better once we get you a copy of all of this. Okay, so we're now at the slide for next steps. And Kristen, I'll hand it back to you.
Yes, so we now have all the information that ALBA Facilities has, all of the assets, all of, you know, those pieces of equipment, all of those preventative maintenance schedules. It's now all loaded into our system. So we have access to our system, and John and I have been working, trying to learn it. We, so our next step really is to get all of our guys starting to use this system so we can start seeing where our work orders are, where they are spending their time, what preventative maintenance is getting done timely, where do we need to add that additional help? I think it's going to be very critical for us to, to watch these high priority items and see, you know, are we spending a lot of time there? Are they doing just hot, you know, just because they're past their life cycle, doesn't necessarily mean they're at a replacement point. So we definitely need to be studying that data as we're using the system and, and figure out where we're going next. Remember that this facility condition assessment also was a planning and budgeting tool for us, as, as well as the PMs and the asset management that they did for us. And we can see really where down the road, actually, the next 20 years, he kind of highlighted five years here for you. Really, it, it goes up 20 years where we really need to be focusing our time, our energy, our, our staff allocation, you know, what we really need to be looking at in terms of what we're going to be requesting in the budget. So now that we have all this information and we're, and we're starting to play around in the system, and John and I are starting to feel comfortable in there, now it's just getting our staff on and really looking at the data. So.
Commissioner Krieger. So Kristen, the guys that, that we have within our own group, are they all going to have iPads or something that they'll be using in the field and, and doing the recording so that information would then come back to John?
Yes.
Or John might be delegating to a certain individual off an iPad, a specific task, and then we get it all recorded so everything stays?
Yes. So our guys will have most likely phones or iPads, probably phones. And that, all that was budgeted when we originally passed this resolution. So we have to get that ordered. John will have a piece of equipment where he will be assigning work orders out. Some work orders, we can set the system up, and we've been working, creating routes. So we have, we have one electrician, so electrical work orders go directly to our electrician. And so, you know, we, we can set up those different routes. So John will be assigning most of them out, but some will be going directly to the individual that would be doing the task. And then we'll be having it right in the, so we have real-time information. We'll be able to record how much time our guys are spending on a certain project, which will really be helpful, you know, not only knowing where we're spending our time and what equipment is demanding our time and our energy, but also it'll be really exact numbers for the end of our cost plan.
So our employees will have county phones issued to them that have the software.
The app, yep.
Okay.
Yep, it has an acting system.
Yes, sir. I'm good, thank you.
So Commissioner Kunin brought up about the Center of Reddars. Is that going to be valuable?
I mean, if you guys want, we could always do. At the time we made that decision, we were going with the company and we didn't, because we paid ALBA Facilities based on square footage, it was not a good use of our money to evaluate the building that was going to be remodeled.
So there has been a needs assessment similar to this done, but it was done by HUD. So in conjunction with an HDA's review of the property.
We didn't choose to do that through this process with.
Right, we were not available to integrate it into this process. How are we going to make it work with this system?
We likely wouldn't make it work with this system. At this point in time, we're still looking at transferring the property if it's an available option. If it's not an available option, we could look at it to see how it possibly could be integrated. Part of the difficulty running into the Center of Reddars is that a good majority of the repairs and maintenance that's made on that property is paid out of the capital improvement fund that's provided by HUD.
But it's still under our control and we need to maintain.
If I can answer that, we can still process work orders for that facility. The equipment, because we didn't get the facility condition assessment done on that building for the reasons we just stated, the equipment hasn't been loaded in. But that doesn't mean that we can't add a location into our system and produce work orders for that building. You know, I don't know about their facility condition assessment, if we can work with them in any way, but, but we can do work orders. Our guys can use the work order system. It's just the facility condition assessment wasn't like pre, since we didn't do it for that building, right? Wasn't loaded into the system. Does that help?
Yeah. But my point is that we still have to maintain it under our control until we potentially might sell it.
Absolutely.
But right now, we don't have the sale yet, so we can maintain.
The facility assessment that was done by HUD, it's similar to this process, was also a 20-year projection as well as someone similar.
And also, Commissioner Lotz, they did an environmental assessment as well, excuse me. And then also Zach informed us, I think last week, that the capital fund annually has been increased from 85 to around $141,000. So that will help in short term.
Elsa?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
For your guy.
Thank you.
I will send it to you, electronic.
Yeah, thank you.
Hold on, hold on.
My favorite.
Close.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Any new business? Miscellaneous. Announcements. Under announcements, I'll make our appointments. We did November and December. We had the Department of Aging Advisory Committee for two-year terms in districts 2, 4, 6, and then at large. Is there any need for a closed session?
There is none.
Motion to adjourn is always in order.
Slow court. All favorite?
Hi.
We adjourn.